That brings us to our regular council meeting, and so now I would like to call to order the July 12, 2011, meeting of the Newport Beach City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. And the first item on the agenda then is clarifications of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Daigle.
None.
And Councilmember Curry.
No items.
Councilmember Selich.
I have none.
And Councilmember Hill?
None.
Councilmember Rosansky.
None, thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor Protem Gardner?
I have two. The first is not so much a clarification, well, both of them are more comments. Item number three, which is the city administration department restructuring and renaming. Did anybody proof this? There are, for some reason, I would say 10 percent of the words have spacing in the middle of them.
It's what the printer does.
Oh.
Actually, the document itself is fine, but oddly, sometimes the printer pulls things apart differently.
Okay, alright, it was sort of confusing to read. And then, on number 11, with the planning commission minutes, we have the votes, but we don't have who voted, and I would like that included in our report if we could have that. Because it, to me, it's an, it gives me an indication of who voted how, and it just would be helpful.
Alright, anything else? Okay, and I have no items of clarification. That brings us to the next agenda item, which is a report on sea lions. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Chris Miller, Harbor Resources Manager, and I'm joined by Shannon Levin, who's the Harbor Resources Supervisor, who actually does most of the work on sea lions every year, and fields most of the calls and coordinates with the Harbor Patrol. Today, I'm just going to, I was asked by Councilmember Gardner, in fact, to bring sea lion, the sea lion topic to the council for just a very quick 10-minute presentation, and to kind of let you know what we do, where we're at, and answer any questions. So, we have about 40 to 60 sea lions. They generally spend their summers here in Newport Harbor, and they generally come between the months of May and October or so, with about 10 or 15 full-time residents that stick around and enjoy beautiful Newport Beach. Typically, the mooring fields that are affected are H and J, and I've got a map on the next page, which I'll show you where those are at. But that's basically the area that is adjacent to, or in between, rather, Lido Isle and the peninsula, kind of by the American Legion. What sea lions like to do is they like to haul out and sun themselves, or just stay dry, which is a little counterintuitive, I suppose, since they're marine mammals, but that's what they like to do. And they like to do that on docks and all types of boats, whether they're sailboats or powerboats. And they'll basically find room anywhere they can, and they are amazingly agile, believe it or not. That's why they're at SeaWorld, and they can jump very high distances. So, virtually all boats are prone. Some that have lower free board, of course, are more likely to be boarded. The problem is that we hear from our residents mostly in the morning hours, because they've been kept awake all night by the sea lions. And they're very territorial, so they get together and they, and when there's more than, more than two, they start to bark and keep people up. And I can understand that, because it's often equated to living next to a dog kennel that bark all day and all night. Not to mention that they also cause damage to the boats and docks, and they've got very oily skin that damages white fiberglass, and of course, they break all sorts of things on your boats, stanchions, lifelines, and things of that nature. They're large animals, you know, they're hundreds, many hundreds of pounds, 500, 600 pounds for the bulls, if not more. These are the mooring areas right here. The red circle is the H and J mooring fields, and the green circle represents the A, the A mooring field. And that's primarily where they hang out, a little bit in the B mooring field right here. BYC does a good job of keeping the sea lions off of their fields, off of their boats and their mooring fields, because they have a shoreboat that kind of does patrols. And I'll also say as much for Newport Harbor Yacht Club, who patrols their field as well. So, just to refresh the city council on what we've done and kind of some efforts that we take. If you recall, last year, the city council approved an ordinance change that gives folks seven days to comply. What that means is, if we see a problem on someone's boat, Shannon will send out a letter, and they have seven days to comply, or they will face an administrative citation. If you recall, about five years ago, we started off with 30 days, with a second seven-day notice. So, in about the past five years, maybe six years, we've gone from 37 days down to seven days. And I think that 37 days was a good place to start off with, but now everybody knows about sea lions, and there really is not an excuse to not be aware of them. We also contract with South Mooring Company, who is here tonight and who will make some comments afterwards. What he does is he goes out with his crew and basically with, sprays water on the sea lions, very simply. And what he does is what I call dispersing the crowd, which means that he, when there's two on a swim step, he'll spray them off, they'll both scatter. He won't be able to chase them out of the harbor naturally, but he'll be able to, you know, hopefully get two from getting back on that boat, maybe just one. And believe it or not, it does work. We're in our third or fourth year doing that, and it does make a difference. There's also a company-
Chris, does it increase the barking when they're dispersed?
Well, that would be a good question for Chuck. He's nodding his head.
Dispersing them, and basically what we do is noise abatement.
Sir, why don't you come up to the microphone and give us your name?
Okay, I'm Chuck South. What we do is noise abatement. That's our entire project, and if you spread them out, they're quiet. If you let them conjugate, or I mean, gather, they'll get, they'll get into groups of hundreds, and you can hear them for miles. So, we have the ability to chase them clear out of the harbor and keep them out of the harbor. But that's a 24/7 task, and we haven't gotten to that point yet. But as you go on, I'll get into that in a little bit.
But I think the question was, when you actually spray them, does that cause them to start barking even louder and make even more racket until they vacate?
No, actually, they jump right in the water if they've got access to the water, and you really don't want to be between them and the water.
Thank you, Chuck. There's also a company called Seal Guard, which is in the business of protecting people's boats and docks. And they are a good group of people who work, have worked with the Marine Mammal Center down in Laguna Beach. And so, they'll put up snow fencing on boats, and they'll arm your dock with water motion sensors and things of that nature. We also work very closely every day with the Harbor Patrol, pretty much from about now till about October. And do, you know, they give us a report on which moorings are having problems, and we in turn write the letters or make the phone calls. And then, believe it or not, relocating vessels to other mooring areas works. You wouldn't think it would, but it does. They don't follow the boat, they just follow the, they just stay in one area. We also send out postcards to the mooring and dock permittees each year, and this is what we've done. And it's just a reminder postcard, we get a lot of feedback from that. And also, we have stickers that we distribute and put those on the commercial boats, or ask those folks to put them on their commercial boats and rental duffys and things of that nature, so they don't encourage the sea lions by feeding them. So here's an idea of what works. This is the gentleman who runs Seal Guard right over here, and then, physical barriers. People put in snow fencing, and they put contraptions or chairs on the back of their swim step. And then, this right here is Mr. South on his skiff, and that's taken during the daylight hours, of course, but he does that at night. Other ideas that do and don't work, we see four or five sea lions right here, and they've pushed these barrels off. But then we have, you know, this looks nice, and it seems to work, plants all around the docks, and of course, chairs. Here's an idea that just came out this year, and he's a Newport resident, and the Harbor Patrol bought a few of these from this person. What they are is they're really low volume, or low height, and what these do, these twirl. And they're not sharp, there's one, two, and three, and two on this one, and he sells them singularly. And they're just like little stars. They don't have sharp points on them, but they don't feel good when you lay on top of them. And so, you can outfit your dock, or your swim step, or on your boat, and I hear that they're working. So that's an idea. And that company's called Seal Stop, an inventor in Newport Beach. So my last slide here is really to talk about, and I put the website up for the folks at home who'd like, and we're going to post this PowerPoint, but you can go to the National Marine Fisheries Service website and learn all you want to about sea lions. One thing that always is the big question that we get asked every year is, what can I do to protect myself? What is the city doing to protect the residents? Well, we're doing exactly what my previous slides told you that we're doing. But I wanted to include some other things that, and this is just a partial list, of approved deterrent methods. And it's kind of up for debate if the city wants to go in that direction with some of these bullet points. Yes, it does say cattle prod right there, and yes, it does say slingshots, and I'm not even sure if slingshots are legal in Newport Beach. I would venture to say they're not. But it just kind of, believe it or not, there is a wide range of things that you can do, and we've taken a cautious approach, primarily focusing on water hoses as being the most, the best way to solve the problem that we can, we can think of.
Can you tell me what a bull pole is?
A bull pole?
A bull pole.
I think a bull rail would be, would be a rail, Chuck, maybe I'm wrong on this, but I think a bull rail would be something that you would install on your dock, that they, that it's like a rail that, that-
Well, I'm talking about the third item up from the bottom there, right above cattle prod.
A bull pole? I think that's just a blunt, a blunt pole.
It's not like what the picadors use with the big sharp.
Right, 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 right. I think that's just a blunt pole. Chuck South, I've asked Chuck to come up here and just, for just a couple minutes, give us some stats that, of sea lions, and kind of where we're at with the service, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Well, let's get to the part where, what can you use on them? The National Marine Fisheries has not actually set out the rules of what you can and can't use. They're working on them, and that information will be coming. The rule of thumb, we started when we first started doing this for the city, rather than just for ourselves, because the problem's been going on since they built the bait. We use poles, water, lights are actually the most effective thing we use. Sea lions do not see well in the light, they're adapted to the dark. You can blind them and walk right amongst them if you've got a bright light, they don't even know you're there. They don't hear that well out of the water either, ears are that teeny. You can't hurt them, and who'd want to? I don't find them to be what I would qualify as mean. Now, if you pull up to a boat with an 800-pound sea lion with two-inch-long canines yelling at you to leave him alone, it's intimidating, but he won't just come after you, I'm glad they're not lions. But we don't hurt them. We use lights, water, and of course, consistency. They get to know you, they're smart, they may be smarter than dogs, for all I know. That's a problem with deterrence. They figure deterrence out, they'll crash right through snow fencing. Of course, you can run wire behind it, and it'll stop them, unless it's the great big ones. But they're trainable. You can train them to just spread out. I'll pull up on a boat full, or a dock full of sea lions, they'll jump in the water and just swim off and be quiet by themselves. And that hasn't changed. They'll just spread, they want to sleep and get warm, they get cold in the water. And that's deterrent method works. There are about 288,000 of them, by the California Fish and Game has told us, sitting out on the Channel Islands. Number's increasing at about 10 percent a year. So our problem isn't going to go away, and we'll have to up the ante on them. I don't think aggressive deterrence by harming them would be the answer. I just don't think that's it, I don't think it will work, and I don't see why you'd want to do it. There are other ways. They could be driven out of the harbor and held, when I say driven, coaxed out, like herding cats, but it can be done. The only problem with that is, you'd have to stand there and keep them from coming back in. Does anyone have any questions to give me a little hand here as to what I might help you with that you may not be informed on?
Councilmember Gardner?
Are there, you're using the water and, I take it, prods? You say you don't use the prods, you just use the water and lights?
We do keep a pole aboard the boat, it's blunt on both ends, and that would be more for self-defense than anything else. But in all the hundreds of times now I've done this, that has, I've never had to bring it out to defend myself or prod them away. You shine a bright light on them and take it away, they'll just go away, because when you're there, they're blind, and they don't like it any more than we would.
Is there anything that you would recommend to residents to do that perhaps they're not doing, those with boats or docks?
On docks, I love the idea. Chris found a fellow, and I appreciate it, in Canada that came up with a motion detected sprinkler system. It's directional, you can put it right down a dock, and it works. Until they figure out, if they wait three minutes, the water stops, then they sit real still. And, but they don't mind sitting real still. It works on the new ones, and everything works until they figure it out, and they're quick studies. They don't work well on boats, it's, it needs power, it needs clean water, it needs batteries, and to go out to a boat and do that every couple weeks gets really expensive.
Okay, any other questions? Alright, thank you so much. I would like to accept public comment on this agenda item. Does anyone care to make a comment? Okay, with that, thanks again. We'll proceed now to the next agenda item, which is code enforcement citation procedures.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor Hand and members of the city council. I guess this is a complete transition from seals to sea lions to code enforcement activity in our city. Could we get the lights?
Do you suppose water hoses would help you in your job?
It may.
Okay.
As long as it's not a privy discharge, we'll be alright. So today's presentation is really a follow-up to a study session item that occurred in April. And just as a quick refresher, at that study session, we discussed code enforcement responsibilities and some of the current issues that we're dealing with currently, and how we interact with other departments to resolve code enforcement complaints within the community. And at that study session, there was two areas of concern that were raised, that staff was asked to come back with some recommendations. And one was in the form of a question, and the question was, why do some code enforcement cases take so long to get compliance or, you know, achieve a resolution? And the other issue was, how is code enforcement and the city going to deal with individuals who are currently in violation of a city code, and we've issued a notice of violation to, we've issued administrative citations, we've met with them, and yet there's no compliance? And I believe Mayor Hand, you referred to them as scofflaws, and that term has stuck since then. So basically, what we're going to do is just discuss those and follow up with some recommendations, and then look for feedback from council. So really, what we'll do is we will discuss our current code enforcement process, basically, what happens when we get a complaint, and the process for achieving compliance. And then we'll answer that question as to why some cases require an extended investigation. And then we'll talk about how we, our repeat violators, and how we want to deal with them, and then we'll make some recommendations and look for council direction as to our, some of our recommendations. So, our current code enforcement practice, step one is essentially, a complaint comes in, and that opens up a code enforcement investigation, and obviously, staff will go out and conduct an investigation, and there's obviously two results after an investigation. One is we'll determine that there is no violation, and the case is closed, or maybe there's not enough evidence to support a violation and moving forward with enforcement. So, either way, that case is closed. The other option, which leads us into step two, is that there is a violation, and staff will issue a notice of violation or some other warning. And with a notice of violation comes a timeframe for compliance. When that compliance date is up, staff will obviously re-inspect and make a determination if there's been compliance. And if not, then we will go to step three, which is issuing a second notice of violation or issuing a level-one administrative citation, which is $100. And there's a number of factors that go into whether we issue a second violation or go straight to citation. And just to give you an example of when we would issue a second notice of violation, let's say we have an out-of-state property owner, and we issue them a notice of violation, they get the letter a little bit later. We would want to give them another notice of violation to document the fact that we're going to give them, you know, an extension, and give them a reasonable amount of timeframe to comply and to be fair. Once the timeline for compliance has expired, either with a second notice of violation or a level-one administrative citation, we go into our next step, which would be step four. Either we've achieved compliance, or we start issuing additional citations. And we, our first one would be a level-two citation, which is a $200. And of course, if there's no compliance, then we would go to additional citations at the $500 level. We would issue total of five citations, and if we're not getting compliance, then we would go to the next step, which would be referral to the city attorney to pursue further enforcement action. And usually, we, after five citations, if we're not getting compliance, that's, we go to step five, which is the city attorney's office, and of course, with the ultimate goal of gaining compliance. So, now that we have a basic understanding of the process and what goes on with an investigation, I want to quickly discuss why some code enforcement cases do require an extended investigation. And so, one of the first issues is the nature of the violation. And some code enforcement complaints, by their very nature, do require a lot of staff time and a lot of resources in order to determine if there is a violation and collecting enough evidence to support that violation. Some of these are like zoning, use permits, where we have to, you know, physically observe that a violation has occurred. And even some property maintenance violations do require some investigation to establish a violation and of course, give a reasonable timeframe to comply.
Matt, a question for you.
Sure.
Within your, the citations that you're issuing, and you may not keep these statistics, but do you know what percentage are owner-occupied properties, and what percentage is a rental property?
I don't have those numbers.
Okay, because you had mentioned you sometimes communicate with out-of-state property owners?
Yeah, we do, we do have-
Or state address?
Yeah, some, yeah, some like on the peninsula, we have a lot of, you know, out-of-town owners, but I don't have those statistics.
Do you have like a sense, or that's pretty difficult to determine?
I couldn't give you an exact number, I'm sorry. The investigative process, when we're investigating cases, there's a lot of steps that are involved with establishing a violation. Obviously, the big one is verifying that a violation exists, and we do this through collection of evidence. We interview witnesses, both friendly and what we would call hostile witnesses, you know, someone who is not interested in providing the information that we need. Field observations, and, you know, field observations aren't, you know, your typical nine-to-five, you know, Monday through Friday. Sometimes we're working weekends, we've been known to be at stakeouts at five in the morning to establish a code violation. So, field observations are time-consuming, because we have to physically observe many of the violations in order to prove our case. Inspections of properties, and one of the big ones that people tend to forget about, and you just asked about this, is contacting the responsible owner and our responsible party. And this has been proven to be tricky at times, because people change their mailing addresses, they change their phone numbers, and so we'll send a letter out, and it comes back, you know, a week later, and there's no return address, so where do you go from there? And so, it's always been tricky to sometimes to find who is the responsible party, where are they living now, and where do we go? So there's a number of resources that we have to use before we can track somebody down.
Do you have warrant powers or the ability to compel a search, or somebody says, I'm not going to let you in, and you just have to say, okay, I'm not coming in?
If somebody says, no, you can't come in, then we work with the city attorney's office and provide them with the evidence that supports the violation, and then if there's evidence to support that, then we will obtain a search and inspection warrant. The other big issue we have is giving individuals reasonable timeframe to comply. And one of our goals is when we have a case, is we want to make sure if it ever goes to a hearing officer, if it ever goes to, you know, to a court, that anybody who looks at it will look at it and say, the city gave this person a reasonable timeframe to comply. So, for example, if there's $10,000 worth of violations, you know, you have to get building permits, is it reasonable to give somebody seven days to do that? You know, when they have to, you know, get an architect to draw plans, when they have to maybe get an engineer to help them with the drawing? So, all those issues play into how much time we give them, and of course, the financial cost of making corrections. And sometimes, in the violations, we find, you know, that there's a number of violations, especially with building permits, that require, that are a financial cost. And so we weigh, those decisions weigh into how much time we give somebody to comply. And of course, the big one is unique circumstances, and it seems like there's always a unique circumstance whenever it comes to code enforcement violation. Things are always, usually not, as they appear, and so those kind of weigh into, into the amount of time we give somebody to comply. Our goal is obviously compliance, and to be fair and reasonable when we're giving timeframes for compliance. And the last one is code enforcement priorities. In our limited resources, we focus our efforts on some of the big priorities. Obviously, one would be like medical marijuana dispensaries, where that's a big focus here in our community, and so, staff resources, because the amount of time and resources needed to investigate that, those are pushed to the top of the priority list. So to give you a quick example of a case, here's a case of illegal dwelling unit. We received a complaint about the illegal dwelling unit. And if you look way in the back of this picture, and I'm sorry I didn't have a better one, you can see a staircase that leads up to the second floor of this house. And in addition to the complaint about the illegal dwelling unit back here, there was complaints about, you know, the total appearance of the property, that it was run down, that it wasn't very kept up. And so after we were able to get a hold of responsible party, we investigated, we found unpermitted construction. There were tenants living in this illegal dwelling unit that had no clue, as well as the property owner, that this was even a violation and that this wasn't a permitted unit. And there was a lot of cost involved with making this. So, we had unpermitted construction, we had long-term tenants, and we had financing issues that all played into the amount of time that we were going to give this individual to make the necessary corrections to bring this property into compliance. However, when we were done, this is the property, the way the property looks today. You can see that the property has nice new windows, it's been painted, but the big one is that staircase was removed. So now we've achieved a permanent resolution to this case. So, yes, it did take a little bit of time to get to this condition, but the big push is that we're not coming back to this property for an illegal dwelling unit again. And so, our big focus is to improve the appearance of the property and get permanent resolutions to our cases. With that, let's talk about repeat violators. And I think to do, start the conversation, we need to focus on how extensive is our problem? Do we have a city-wide problem, or is it limited to a few select individuals? And then I'd like to identify who are our repeat violators and offenders, you know, what code violations are we finding continual problems with? And then we'd like to make some recommendations and hear back from city council as to those recommendations. So, looking back at 2010 cases, out of all the cases that we took enforcement action on, 95 percent were resolved through verbal or written warning notices. And I want to focus in on that number, that 95 percent of all our code enforcement cases that we took action on were resolved through verbal warnings or written notices of some type. No citations were necessary- Uh, no citations were necessary, and that, that shows two things. One, that we have a community that's, that's willing to work with us, and that, you know, if, if there is a violation of municipal code, that they are willing to, to take the necessary steps to correct the violation, and, and just as equally, it shows that we have a, we have a well-trained staff, and a, and a very competent staff that can, can resolve violations, um, through just written warnings, uh, written warnings, or even just verbal communication.
Matt, do you have any sense of, of that ninety-five percent, how much, how much of that had required two warning notices? Two NOVs before it got resolved?
That, I don't know the number, too.
Any guess?
I, I would say most are resolved through just a single warning notice. And then, of course, we have those, those five percent, uh, the five percent being those that we had to proceed with some sort of further administrative citation process. So, let's talk about the five percent. Out of that five percent, seventy-eight percent complied after being issued a hundred-dollar citation. So, we issued a level-one citation, compliance was achieved. Eight percent, uh, came out, uh, we achieved compliance after issuing a level-two citation. So, we issued a level-one, no compliance, we issued a level-two, case closed. And then, we had fourteen percent who made it into the level-three, um, which is the five hundred dollars, and, and we lumped all those into whether they were issued a one-hundred, or, I mean, a one-five-hundred, or multiple five-hundred-dollar citations.
So, to look at the math just a little differently, starting with all of the cases to begin with, ninety-nine percent of them get resolved, uh, through the second citation. Only one percent has to go through more than two citations. I think that's the way the math works.
Pretty close, yeah.
All right, go, go ahead.
And, uh, this is just a quick refresher on the steps of, of enforcement. So, let's break down those citations by, uh, category. So, twenty-four percent of, of all our citations were issued, um, in related to zoning cases involving land use, so those are illegal dwelling units, uh, group homes, medical marijuana dispensaries. Uh, nineteen percent were issued for use permit violations, eighteen percent were in, in, uh, property maintenance, general nuisance sort of things. Uh, you had seventeen percent going to zoning general, which we would define like sign-code violations, maybe, uh, via setback violations, or, um, grudges that are full of storage, where they can't park their vehicles in there. And then, we have the other category, which is like business licenses, encroachments into the public ride-ways, and of course, lastly, we have water quality. Really, where, where you're going to find the one-and-done, where we issued one citation, and then we were, the case was closed, is essentially in these categories. So, the majority of work, where we're getting into the multiple citations, is use permits and land use violations, and that, that's where most of the investigation time is involved here. So, to look at who our problem cases and repeat violators are, we found that, um, individuals with, or operators, or persons with discretionary approvals, and, um, those are use permits, outdoor dining permits, development agreements, so it's just, just a few of, of some of the discretionary approvals. Uh, we've also found that land uses in residential districts create some issues for us, uh, illegal dwelling units, and of course, group residential uses. And lastly, uh, land uses in commercial districts, so, uh, unpermitted uses, um, in commercial districts, and then of cour- of course, permitted uses, but, um, they're violating other municipal code sections, like sign codes, or other related issues. So, to give a quick example of, uh, of an issue, I'm not sure how many of you remember Fury, but I'm sure most of you remember Code Restaurant, there's a business located up in the Santa Heights, Santa Ana Heights area. Both of these locations, first Fury, and then Code, large clientele, um, huge clientele base, um, lots of customers, the place was jam-packed on weekends, and that equals a lot of money, so they were making huge profits. And with those huge profits, we would issue our hundred-dollar citation, and what does that really do? So, they would repeat the violations, and completely disregard citations, because if you issue a hundred, two-hundred, five-hundred dollar citation, and you made twenty thousand dollars in one night, what does that really matter to you? Um, and, and this took a lot of staff time and resources, once again, to investigate and to bring into compliance. So, some recommendations, and this is split into two parts, some things that we are currently doing, and just for informational purposes, and then some things we, we'd like for, for council, um, feedback on. So, first off, uh, we are hiring, um, one additional code enforcement officer, bringing our, our staff up to, uh, four to, full-time officers, and, uh, another one we are doing is creating a code enforcement volunteer program, and I'm actually really excited about this, because this is going to add additional bodies to our code enforcement division with, with minimal cost to, to the city. More eyes, more ears, and this will help, um, our staff focus their efforts on, on some of the more complex cases, and some of the, the more, uh, routine stuff can be assigned to, to volunteers.
So, how do you, s- what sort of things do you see the volunteers doing?
Mostly, what I see the volunteers doing is, um, following up on cases, so for example, if we get a call about refrigerator in the alleyway, well, so, a volunteer could drive down the alleyway, take a picture of that, and bring it back, and have the, and had a code enforcement officer sign the notice of violation, um, maybe a trash can-
So, you get weeds, that go look at it?
Weeds, trash cans.
But they, they wouldn't be taking any action, they would be more just doing groundwork for-
They would be doing more, yes, and then bringing back, and the way we've, we've designed Permits Plus, which is our, um, our permitting system for the city, we've automated it, so now, all they have to do is go in there, enter in the address, click the violation, and it's already entered in the, the wording for the violation, so they don't have to do any data entry, it's merely just pressing print, we take it to the officer, it's signed by an officer, and now we have the evidence, and the other officers can focus their efforts on some of the more bigger cases.
Who would these volunteers be, do you think?
Um, we're looking for, um, maybe retired police officers, uh, we're looking for, uh, college interns with a criminal justice background. In fact, that's how I started in, in code enforcement, as I needed an internship out of college, and I, I was looking through the internet, trying to find something really fast, and, and found the word "code enforcement officer" in, in, on the internet, and I was like, "Well, that seems kind of interesting," and here I am, eight years later, doing code enforcement. So, we're kind of looking for those individuals who have some criminal justice background, either retired, maybe some, um, college interns, and, and we'll go from there.
But the volunteers would have no citation authority on their own?
Absolutely not.
They would still, their, anything they would give you would still require a code enforcement officer's verification of the problem?
Correct, correct. They would be, they would be assigned, as, as we're, and we're obviously still developing the details, but they would be assigned to a code enforcement officer who would be supervising their activity, making sure that-
And, and you wouldn't expect a volunteer to interact with a cite-sighted offender?
No, they would, they wouldn't even be issuing citations, that would be completely off, off the books.
I got a problem with that. I, I understand totally how we want to keep the city in the style, and the quality, and, and the quality of life, and life safety that we have, but where do we stop the Gestapo, you know, where do we cross the line? Anecdotal experience, it was two years ago, uh, we got contacted by a code enforcement officer, because in one of our vacant suites, there was a ladder that we had stored inside the suite, and he wanted to know what we were going to be doing. And, uh, and, you know, I, I just didn't think it was any of his business as to what we were going to be doing, it's where we happened to store a ladder. And, you know, so, you know-
When do we, when do we become too big brother on this thing? I mean, where's the big picture, and where are we drawing that line? I'm, I'm concerned about that.
That's a fair question, um, with this volunteer-
Before, before you, I, I have a, I have a problem with saying something like that is Gestapo technique, I mean, that just is ridiculous. Most of the complaints that I get are things that are referred to code enforcement, and it seems to me that, that to have a volunteer program where somebody goes out and takes a picture of weeds, if you've gotten a complaint, that may be the end of the complaint, they may show, you come back and say, "You know, there's, there's nothing here." But, I mean, if, that's the point of it, just to go out and establish some, some verification of a complaint, I, I don't, to me, that doesn't really s- say Gestapo, and I, I don't expect us to be goose-stepping into, into those pictures.
Well, but-
Well, I, I, I disagree with that, because, I mean, these people, I assume, are not going to be sitting around at a table in the office someplace, waiting for someone to call, they're going to be out roving around, and, and is that what we want? I mean-
Well, I think that's the question that Matt needs to answer, would, do we expect these volunteers to be out proactively identifying violations, or will they be working on-demand, basically, as you direct them to do things?
The way I envision this program is, is to really help out the current officers with some of their caseload, and, and helping them out with some of their, the, the backlog of, of complaints, so, I don't envision them being proactively sweeping through neighborhoods, looking for violations, the way I envisioned it is, uh, our officers have hu- huge caseloads, and so, an officer could say, "You know what, I got a complaint," and I'll use the classic example of the refrigerator in the alleyway, "You know what, I, I'm investigating use permit violation, can you go take a look, take a picture, let me know if this is a violation." It's, it's really what I'm, I'm, I'm looking for, for our volunteers to be, doing that sort of follow-up activity. And, and another, uh, another, um, other activities I'll be doing is, uh, helping us out with even simple filing, um, inputting stuff into databases, so it won't always be fieldwork, there'll also be a lot of office functions, which will, once again, help our officers spend more of their time investigating some of the more bigger issues that, that need to be looked at.
Besides, you're going to need a lot of the, a lot more enforcement to force that leaf blower ordinance that you wanted. Okay, anything further, Councilmember Hill, or is it?
I can see.
All right, go ahead, Matt.
I did have a question, 'cause I, um-
Sure.
I was looking at, uh, your slides, and you're saying that you're now resolving a hundred percent of your cases, you know, like ninety-five, whatever is ninety-five percent, is first one violation or less, and it's really only one percent that is, um, you know, really kind of going to the last mile with those. So, from a workload standpoint, it sounds like you're able to resolve issues, and, I mean, so if you look at that, how many additional really hours do you need of personnel to look at things, or you feel pretty overburdened trying to reach those targets?
We do have a, a lot of calls for service coming in, um-
Yeah.
And, and the one percent of cases that, that do get into the five-hundred-dollar stage, and maybe it's two percent, whatever the math turns out, those are the ones that, that take a lot of staff time to enforce. I guess a classic example is like your medical marijuana dispensaries, where it, it takes a lot of staff time and a lot of resources, not only from our division, but also from, um, building department, police, even city attorney's office, a- all of us work together, and so, the, these kinds of issues do take a lot of staff time, and we, we do need the additional help, so that our guys can focus on, on some of the, the bigger issues, and let volunteers work on some of those smaller issues.
I wanted to make it clear, too, as I think Matt noted, this is not a, this is a position that's in the budget, and it's a position that had been vacant for a period of time, so it's, the intent is to bring that back up to where we should be, at least, we think.
Yeah, I, I have no problems with that, that's fine, I was just trying to gauge, um, you know, how much unmet sort of need is out there, in terms of the amount of volunteer ism that you'd need, that's what I was just trying to understand.
Initially, we're hoping to, to start small, only so we can make sure we have a good handle on it, um, but there, there's a lot of work that, that we need to be done, and we want to make sure that we resolve cases quickly, and that's why we want to, um, we think the volunteer program will help us out, but yes, there's a lot of work, and there's a lot of issues out there that, that we, we definitely need the help.
Okay, go ahead, Matt.
All right. So, how are we going to deal with, uh, procedures, uh, problem, or repeat violators, and some of the steps we've taken so far? With repeat violators, we, we're skipping the warning, um, step. So, if we have someone who we know violates continually, why, why go with a warning notice? Let's go straight to the administrative citation. Um, they've already been warned and advised before, you know, let's, let's skip this step and go straight to the administrative citation process, obviously with some correction measures. And of course, this is for, you, you know, your repeat violators, this is not for someone who's just offended for the first time. Um, we're issuing citations, uh, separately for, for each municipal code, so if, uh, what we used to do is we would issue a blanket citation for, um, maybe six or seven violations, and now, we, we, we are, uh, in certain occasions, separating them out for each violation of, of municipal code that's been violated. Uh, when it comes to discretionary approvals, uh, we are issuing citations for each use permit condition violated, and we're also increasing the, um, the level of citation on violation of the permit as well. Um, we're also, uh, issuing citations on a daily basis, whereas before, we would go, you know, week, and week, and week, and, uh, if, if it's a repeat violator, let's go daily, um, to achieve compliance. Um, our past practice was to, to issue, um, five administrative citations, and then referring it to the city attorney. However, we've come to realize that, uh, after three citations, when you get to that five-hundred-dollar level, if they're, if they're not complying by then, they're probably not going to comply at all, so, why waste time going to five, six, or seven, whatever the case may be? We've decided to, to make the cutoff at the fourth administrative citation level, and then refer it to the city attorney for assistance. And then, of course, if we have, um, some repeat violators, who, you know, we've continually warned, continually warned, um, rather than, than going through the whole enforcement process of warning notices and citations, we will refer the, the case to the city attorney's office directly when, when they violate again, and, and ask for, uh, assistance and, and enforcement action. Um, some recommendations that we'd like, uh, council feedback on, uh, the first one is pretty simple, we want to update, um, chapter 105, and that would be done to, to reflect our current enforcement practices, um, some minor changes, just to clean up, um, some of the wording in there. Uh, we'd also like to increase fines for administrative citations, and there's really two ways, two options for this, so we'll start with option number one. Option number one is we would increase, um, the citations, so for level-one, we would go from one-hundred to two-hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, from level-two, we would go two-hundred to five-hundred, and level-three, we would go from five-hundred to a thousand dollars. The other option is, instead of increasing the, the, the fine levels, we would just add a fourth, um, level of citation, which would be a thousand-dollar, um, citation fine. So, once again, we could up the fee amounts in this area, so we would go two-fifty, five-hundred, and a thousand, or we could keep it all the same, and just add a thousand-dollar citation
Oh, I'll wait until he's done.
No, go ahead, we can-
Uh, I, I guess, I'm not in favor of option one, I think, especially if you're talking about multiple citations at, at the first, you know, for the multiple offenses, and issuing multiple tickets, and from doing it on a daily basis, I mean, I think that gets a little bit excessive. I think the idea is to get someone's attention with the citation, um, you know, a hundred dollars, I think gets most people's attention, two-hundred certainly would, and five-hundred definitely would, and, uh, as you say, what, you know, if they're not paying, or you're getting to the fifth or sixth citation, it doesn't matter what the fine is, at that point, you're just going to have to refer to the city attorney's office anyway, so, I mean, I guess I might be able to support the fourth level, thousand-dollar citation, but I, I don't really see a need to change the amount of the citation, personally.
Councilmember Curry?
Well, to Mayor Henn's point, it seems like we're getting about ninety-nine percent compliance, really at about level-one. So, all of these additional fines, and powers, and, and volunteers, et cetera, are all focused on one percent of the problem, it seems to me, because it, based on this report, we're being successful in resolving ninety-five, or ninety-eight, or ninety-nine percent of the, of the problem under the current system. I mean, is that accurate?
Well, before he answers that, I, I could, I agree with you on this, the fine thing, I mean, the, the volunteer and the other position, I mean, I, you know, there's a lot of stuff that probably just doesn't get taken care of, because there's just not enough time to do it.
Fair enough.
And I don't have a problem with them having volunteers to help them, or, or even filling the staff position, if that's, you know, if we budgeted, and you feel that there's a need for it, because there's things that are just not getting done. This is different, though, and it does go to your point, that, yeah, you're, ninety-nine percent of the people are getting hurt, because one percent is not following the rules, and so, if you put a bigger fine in the, the end, that catches that one percent on option two, but doesn't really hurt the other people that, "Okay, we, you know, I made a mistake, or whatever, and I'll fix it, I'm sorry, and I'll, here's your hundred bucks," kind of thing.
Yeah, let me, just to follow on on that, uh, it seems like the system's working just fine through, sorry, it's working very well through the second level of fine, because we're getting eighty-nine percent compliance for a one-hundred-dollar site and a two-hundred-dollar site. Through that level, we get ninety-nine percent compliance. People really do want to do the right thing, generally, and once you get their attention, they do it. And so, I would go just a little differently. I would say, after level-two, for non-compliance, it gets referred to the city attorney's office. And I might even eliminate level-three and level-four, and just take it straight to the folks that are going to make sure it gets handled. And dispense with the higher amount, maybe there needs to be a higher fine associated with it going to the city attorney's office, I don't know, I mean, if there's, maybe that's an appropriate thing, too. if there's, maybe that's an appropriate thing, too. But, you know, we're getting 99% compliance. Why mess with what we're doing? Let's really focus in on the 1% and taking prompt action. And if we eliminate level three, four, and five on citation, that accomplishes another purpose that I think is important, which is to greatly speed up the timeframe in which we deal with the scoff laws, the 1%. So that's kind of how I feel about it.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, before you go further, maybe some comments from staff. I think I'm uncomfortable eliminating the level three because I think that's an enticement to the person at level two to not go to level three. I don't know if they'd see that same enticement if, oh, this gets referred to the city attorney's office.
Well, I guess what I would say is, keep the level three fine, maybe even raise it to a larger amount, but it's assessed at the same time that it is referred to the city attorney's office. So that you get the level three fine and it's referred to the city attorney's office. I'd be willing to do that. My main thing is, get it to the point of action and resolution quicker. Does the city attorney have, or Kim, do you have a comment?
Mr. Mayor, what we could do is shorten the timeframe between level two and level three, that we don't have to give the same initial time period for corrective measures to occur. So we could just make it very abbreviated in terms of issuing the third citation and turning it over to the city attorney's office so that we still have, you know, a briefer timeframe. So instead of giving two weeks, two weeks, two weeks, you say, we have two weeks, you have one week, you have two days, and then it's off. And that is, that's another option.
Well, okay. I guess my view is, I don't see the need for levels four and five. And I would like to see it go to the city attorney's office at the level three citation point.
Yes, I can understand that. And I sort of think of three strikes, you're out myself. But I also think, though, that having the tool remaining of a level three and a level four citation, the four being the added citation level, recognizing that your code enforcement officers have discretion as to which citation also to issue. And so if you're dealing with someone who's proving to be a scoff law, and they make a determination that that new level of $1,000 may really wake them up and get, you know, achieve enforcement, then that's cheaper than sending it to us. I mean, to be perfectly candid, I mean, for the utilization of our office and to utilize the time. But I think that we need to work together and make that determination so that we get that early resolution by the third citation, whether it's level four or level three citation. And then, but going to five citations plus a couple of NOBs, that's just way too much. It provides, it uses too much staff time and it provides too much time for folks to sort of scoff at the system. So I agree with you completely, but I'd like to keep the tools available for staff, for staff to utilize and at their discretion if they think they can achieve enforcement at that level.
Well, if that's in conjunction with the idea that at the time of issuance of level three fine, we have the discretion to go to the city attorney's office for resolution, you know, then that accomplishes my purpose.
Is it every two weeks that they have, or it's every, weekly you cite them? I thought it was weekly.
We typically go with weekly citations.
That's what I thought.
But we're going forward with going daily now on some citations and violations.
Like which ones with those fees?
I guess maybe land use violations would probably be a good one, maybe use permit violations where they violated on Friday night, we've already warned them, and then they violate on Saturday night. We would issue one citation for Friday night and then one citation for Saturday night, probably a good classic example.
But those are, that's almost like two discrete instances, I guess, whereas, like someone who didn't get a building permit or something for a fence.
Correct.
You know, I mean, that's, the fence is there. I mean, yeah, I could see you wait a week if they haven't come in to get a building permit, give them another one, but not the next day or something.
No, we would give them a reasonable timeframe to comply.
So there is some discretion there.
Well, you had a second thought here. Continue with your presentation.
So, since we were talking about raising fines, we've identified some of our major problem cases as being, once again, issues related to land use, issues related to use permit violations, and commercial uses. So what we were recommending is to raise the level of citation fees. And once again, this is the worst of the worst. This is for violators who, I don't know, you violate one month, they're good, another month comes by, we're back at it again. Another month goes by, another month comes by, and we're back at it again. So it's like a roller coaster. And what we're looking to do, and based on your feedback, is to raise the levels. So level one would be up to 1,000, up two is the key that we're going. So it wouldn't automatically be 1,000, up to 3,000, up to 5,000, and up to 10,000. And those sections that we're referring to would be violations of use permits, unpermitted uses. Classic example, once again, would be marijuana dispensary where they're raking in plenty of money and, you know, this would be equal. And then, of course, you know, some land use violations in commercial and residential zoning districts.
Wouldn't you be saying on that, then, that your level one fine would be a minimum of $100 up to a maximum of 1,000 and so forth up the path?
Correct. Correct.
I guess I'd be interested in whether or not there's some sort of a decision. I'm going back to this repeated violator rule. I mean, it seems like there needs to be some sort of a decision rule there. So many violations within a six-month period throws you into a separate category that gets you into the higher fine. Have you thought about it that way?
Yeah, we would be working with the city manager and the city attorney's office to develop a set of criteria at which point to trigger this level of citations. Because obviously, you know, for someone who violates for the first time, I would agree, 100, $1,000 citation is extremely harsh. But this is for somebody, and I could probably count on my fingers the number of violators who this would readily apply to if we went with something like this.
Councilmember Selig?
Yeah, can you give us some more specific examples of where you would use this higher level of fines?
I think the classic example would be your use operator who has a use permit. And I guess we can go back to the Fury and Code restaurants where, as I mentioned, they had large profits, huge clientele base, and our 100, 200, 500 dollar citations weren't making a dent. I mean, they were bringing in, and David, you probably remember more of the numbers they were bringing, but it was, I don't know, 10, 15,000 easily a night. And a $100 citation is bottle service.
It was bottle service. Actually, bottle service is more than $100.
That's a great example of where that, that kind of citation would be helpful. And I think what we're dealing with, and I, and I, Matt's highlighting what I basically call is what about the transient offenders? The folks who see for their economic value that they can violate once every three months or whenever they're gonna have a big party. And you see those when the operators are restaurant or club operators and they're over, they're overfilling of the facilities because they make so much money. And if we don't have the tool to really find them and stop them, then they'll do it again. It's not an effective thing to use that repeat citations or citations that accrue on a daily basis because they're transient. They end that night, you know, 4th of July, New Year's, those things. That's where they're making that money. So we need to deter them with a citation. And I think that's the most cost-effective way for us to deal with compliance issues as opposed to moving on to nuisance abatement and other aspects like that.
How do you go about actually collecting the fine? And how successful are we on collecting all of these fines that we levy? I mean, do we have a mechanism where we track how successful we are in collecting them? Like, are we collecting 50%, 90%?
I don't know the exact numbers on that. I know that's handled through our revenue division, and I know they do send in two collections when they haven't paid. I don't know if anybody's here.
Yeah, I'd be interested, and I just know how successful we are in collecting. I know that in working with the bids, the collection process to get compliance from people that are supposed to pay their bid dues doesn't work very well. So I'm just wondering, you know, are we really collecting? Are we just levying fines and not collecting? Are we leaning property? I mean, what are we doing?
Yeah, we'll find out for you. Okay. Other comments? Did you have?
No, that was, that was the last slide and wanted to open up to feedback. Obviously, we've started, so.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess I did have one other question, this repeat violator thing. What we're talking about here is having, coming back with a rule that basically says for repeat violations of small infractions, but over a period of time, there's a lot of violations and fix and violation and fix. Not just for the Fury restaurant example on, you know, the one-time thing. I'm talking about repeated violations within a period of time. You'll come back with a concept that'll capture that at the higher fine level.
Yes.
For, like, for instance, the restaurants and things, is it possible in our use permits or even our, the new permit, the operator's license, to just put in like a set number? Like, if you get three violations or whatever in a year, if you, your permit is void or gone, can't we do something like that in there?
Yeah, you can do that certainly in the operator's permit. Of course, it's in the chief of police's discretion. I mean, you can do those things. I'm not a fan of set numbers necessarily because every factual situation presents a different scenario. But when you deal with conditional use permit violations and such, you can put it in as a standard for consideration as well. There may be exceptions, or there may be situations where the director or someone else may not want, think it's the most effective way to achieve compliance. That's why I'm not really big on solid numbers and sort of like, we're gonna lower the boom, because we don't know the circumstances which led to it. But you can create those kinds of guidelines that exist inside use permits, et cetera.
Yeah, something we should really think about, I think, going forward. Mayor Protem Gardner?
I just, to reassure, reassure Rush as well, that our code enforcement people are not driving down alleys and just peeking in people's windows. It is almost entirely complaint-based. Is that not true? And then we do see things, though, if you're driving along and you see some black goo coming down the street, you will go back and say, where's that coming from? And try to stop it. And you may notice something that's just like, what is that thing doing in the middle of the sidewalk? No, you cannot have that there business or something. But in general, we're not out there paroling, patrolling the streets and going, aha, gotcha.
That's correct. We are almost completely reactive, except for things like water quality violations, real health and safety violations, you know, trip and fall hazards in the public rideaway, things that would, you know, endanger someone's health and safety. Those are the kind of things we would take some proactive enforcement on. But pretty much everything else right now is reactive enforcement.
Councilmember Hill?
I do support the complaint-based operation. The complaints that I get is that we have transitioned out of that. And when I look at this with the level of paranoia, one of my favorite sayings is, just because you're paranoid, it doesn't mean someone's not out to get you. I think that I see us moving more into away from the complaint base. If we're sticking with the complaint base, then I'm in full support. I'm also in full support of, just from a pure management aspect, of a volunteer program to take some of the drudgery and the paperwork and the follow-up and that type of thing. If those individuals are dispatched out to do some of the grunt work of the decision-makers and the people that have discretionary abilities, decision-making abilities, that kind of thing, then I think that's a very, very logical thing to do as well. I would support that. I would support that to the point of saying that, you know, I would, from just a pure management thing, and given the budgetary environment that we live in, is I would activate that volunteer program as rapidly as possible and see if you need that other position being filled. Because if you take a lot of drudgery, time-consuming burden off of your existing staff, you might not need that fourth position.
Okay. Councilmember Daigle?
What's the lay of the land with the medical marijuana dispensaries? What's going on out there with them?
We are taking enforcement action on any new and existing medical marijuana dispensaries. We've invested, we've inspected, actually, one, was it yesterday, and determined that it is closed down. And we've sent abatement letters to all the rest. One is in the process of closing down, and two, we're taking some further enforcement action on.
And then, what, I guess, what is sort of the amount of marijuana that gets dispensed from these facilities?
When we get in to inspect, there's not, there's no marijuana there. So I couldn't give you how much they're dispensing. But, I mean, if they're open daily, I guess they're having customers on a regular basis, so I couldn't give you the number.
And what would be the level of customer activity, like a few people every hour?
I couldn't even answer that. I know we've done some investigations and observed activity there, but the exact number I couldn't give you for sure. Yes.
Councilmember Selig?
Yeah, well, I've got a lot of experience in code enforcement. When I was in college, I worked as a code enforcement officer for a city in the San Gabriel Valley, which I won't name, but needless to say, it had a lot of code enforcement problems. And in Huntington Beach, I had the code enforcement division under my supervision. And I can say this, you can never have enough code enforcement officers. There'll always be more complaints and more code violations than any jurisdiction can practically provide code enforcement. So you have to figure out how to work smart. You gotta work, I believe, on a complaint basis unless you have specific problems where you do a targeted code enforcement program, which some cities have to go out and do. I really don't know where we stand. What I'd be interested in knowing is, and I know we have these four positions budgeted, but where do we stand comparison to other cities in Orange County in terms of how many code enforcement officers we have, say, per 1,000 population, just to get an idea of where we stand there. I'm very skeptical about the volunteer concept. I think it has potential to create problems, put neighbors against neighbors. I think it has the potential to create more problems than it solves. And I'd be interested in knowing any other jurisdictions that have volunteer programs and what kind of success or failures they have or have had with those kind of programs, and getting that kind of information. I agree with the mayor that we need to find a way to get these, the 1% that we're talking about, that's what we're really talking about, this 1%, and, you know, how, what kind of resources are we gonna spend chasing the 1% in getting those things to the city attorney's office faster rather than having a longer step-by-step process on it. And then again, I'd like to know how effective our fine situation is. I mean, are we really collecting fines on this Shawnee situation? I saw in the staff report, we've levied all these fines. How much have we actually collected? Any? Probably not, I'm guessing. You know, and what, as you get down the road, you know, are we gonna collect it? Are we gonna negotiate out? I mean, what happens with these fines?
Yeah, there are significant issues related to the actual collection of fines, and particularly issues related, as you brought up, related to the collection of the bids. We're talking to the assistant city manager and revenue on different ways to expedite and make it more effective, the enforcement system.
Yeah. Well, see, my point is, we talk about all these fines, but if we're not actually collecting the money, it's not very punitive. So again, as the mayor said, getting issues to the city attorney's office faster rather than longer, or rather than having a bunch of fines that we're never gonna collect, get them to the city attorney's office and get the matters taken care of. So those would be my comments.
Well, when we come back with an action item, then you'll answer these questions that have been raised today, I presume. So, Councilmember Curry?
Yeah, I think, again, the point of the presentation is, is that in 99% of the cases, we are successful in achieving compliance through this process. So I think the first sort of point of departure is, let's not mess with what's working. I think we are inclining ourselves to get a little bit fine-happy of late, and so I would be very careful about how these fines are structured. I generally say we wouldn't necessarily need to adjust them. But I think a case may be able to be made for the marijuana dispensaries and maybe in some of these, you know, nightclub situations that's unique, that needs, where the fines are not adequate to do the job. So maybe we need to address them. But let's address them in those limited contexts so that they are effective for what we're trying to do. As for staffing, I'm sort of agnostic about volunteers versus, you know, additional staff and whether we need more or less. I probably agree with Mr. Selig. We probably need more people to assure that we can do this job in a timely way. I am, I suspect, a little concerned about volunteers who may want to, you know, be in this just to rat their friends out or to carry on a particular crusade that they have about as an issue in the city. So we have to be careful about that. But again, I, you know, my perspective on this is, I think for the most part, our system is working very well. And so if we're gonna come back with something, let's come back with a very targeted approach that gets to the problem cases.
Okay. Just would add two thoughts. I'm okay on the volunteer program as long as you carefully set out what the responsibilities of these people are. And if they are carefully set forth like you've described them here, I have less difficulty with it to give it a whirl and see if it works. And finally, I'd have to say, Matt, I think this was really an excellent presentation. I mean, it helped me understand what's the right path here. When I saw the numbers... When I saw the numbers, about 99% compliance, it's really focusing in on changes that, that target the 1% that are the real problem. So, makes me feel better about our citizens too, actually, frankly. 99% of them, even that get warned or cited, really do, really are interested in fixing the problem. So, all right. With that, is-
I'm going to summarize what I think I've heard, at least the majority of people.
I do want to take public comment. Maybe we can wait until after that. So may, can we take public comment on this issue? Does anyone care to make a comment?
W.R. Dildin, live on, in, within the Balboa Village bid. Back in the 60s, I can remember Saturdays and Sundays, two code enforcement officers riding bicycles. Could be working seven days a week, checking for city licenses, did we have permits, et cetera. I think with the advent of the homeowner associations, which were trying to control their neighborhoods for standards, appearance and whatnot, code enforcement in some not, I wasn't here full-time then to know what happened here. I know back in about, I think it was 2002, I turned in a complaint on trash cans and some other items. And unfortunately, code enforcement at that time used another department. The individual went out and made individual deals overriding municipal code sections. It's still there today. Now, Matt, I met up with him when he first come to work for the city. He's come a long ways, doing a heck of a job. I called this morning anticipating getting his answering machine with a question, who answers the phone? Matt. We had quite a discussion, solved my problem temporarily. But the, the more important thing, I thought, and I think this is the third study session that I've attended on code enforcement. And the first one was when, excuse me, Councilman Gardner, I think some papers were delivered to you and there was a violation on your own property that you took care of right, right away. This is three or four years ago. Didn't John deliver some papers out there and it spurred up something, stirred up something? Anyway, I apologize if I'm incorrect, but that's what my memory. That at that time, when a code enforcement officer goes out and he sees other things that are obvious to him, particularly in the public right-of-way, that he's going to address those. I probably have 15 photographs now of things. And I've been reluctant, as you said, to become an advocate, and I've gotten that reputation in the neighborhood and I can care less at this stage of the game. I had a very bad experience in the late 80s. I built five duplexes back in the 60s, three stories upstairs, two stories downstairs. I got all the information, submitted the plans to the city, the original plans, showing that it was a three-bedroom. Everything's resolved. It's now a triplex on the city records. Consequently, the other two units or three units have been converted to triplexes. Mine is the only one that's a true duplex today. It affects my property values, their absentee owners, they could care less. It's not good as far as I'm, I'm concerned. But I think sitting through these sessions, I think you're headed in the right direction. And Matt and his staff, I, I think he could use another one, the volunteer program, I think it would be helpful. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other comments on this agenda item? All right. Thank you, Matt. We'll move on to the next agenda item.
Actually, I did want some additional-
Oh, I'm sorry. You were going to summarize. That's right.
I got the, the sense that at least four people are comfortable with a complaint-based volunteer program. I got the sense that you're okay with Matt's recommendations regarding problem and repeat violators, I'm going to be more specific, including bypassing the warning and admin site process with corrective, and issue admin sites right away with corrective measures, issuing separate citations for each code violation, discretionary approvals you would issue. We would issue sites for each use permit condition violated and increase citations on violation of the permit. Um, that we would, again, issue them on a daily basis if necessary. I'd like to see heads nodding or not on something the mayor referred to, and that would be, give code enforcement the discretion to refer cases to the city attorney at the third admin site. That seem, okay, I saw enough nods. Of course, referring them to the city attorney's office. I didn't get the impression you were interested in raising the fee levels, except with, I'll, I'll stop right there. That's the impression I got, that we would go to the third violation to the city attorney's office with the existing fine, not increase the fines. And let, and let me next get to the, these special cases, but for normal cases, I didn't get the impression there's interest in raising those fees. Okay? You still have one more shot at this, obviously, when it comes back to you. We just wanted to prepare it. So, and now these specific things like marijuana dispensaries, nightclubs, I think what Mr. Curry referred to as items with limit, a limited context, that we would have the ability to issue a fine up to a thousand or 3,000 or 5,000 or 10,000 for the fourth violation. Does that see any heads, enough heads nodding on that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that because as long as you're very specific about what they are.
So in our code, we'd come back with what we could issue those on. And I think that's all I had. That, any questions, Matt, or Kim, or Kathy, you think you have direction?
Well, the, the issue of some sort of a decision rule about repeated smaller violations-
Yes, we'll bring that back.
-triggering into this higher-
Corrective process, yeah. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Thanks a lot. Okay, on to our next agenda item, Visit Newport Beach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, and always pleased to have Visit Newport Beach with us in the form of Gary Sherwin, the president and CEO. And I, I believe Gary has a presentation that involves their, their marketing effort and budget. And this is something, this is a process that's obligated of the council and of Visit Newport Beach as a part of the existing agreement we have with them, where at least once a year, you review that. Can help you out, Gary, if that's, I'll, I'll keep talking for a few more. And then at the conclusion of that, I, I would, I think both Gary and I would like your feedback on some concepts that they're interested in, and I think that I'm interested in involving an amendment, possible amendment to that agreement. And we'll talk about that and welcome your, your questions and comments with the expectation to potentially bring that back to you at a future date, not too far in the, in the distant future.
Getting our technology in order.
Are you sure you got the right guy working on that?
Thank you, Dave. Mayor Hen, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, it's a delight to be with you again. And, you know, I know that putting a microphone in front of a very passionate marketing person is always a dangerous proposition, so my promise to you is to be short and pithy today. You have, I know that you've received highlights from our marketing and business plan that we, that we create every year. This year, it's a particularly detailed one. We spent a lot of time on research, and I know you've received the highlights of some of that along with the budget summary. Today's presentation is really going to give you sort of a, kind of a, almost Cliff Notes version of some of the key elements within that marketing plan. Additionally, I know several of you who joined us with, for our annual dinner, received a copy of our community report. This report really kind of talks about what we accomplished last year programmatically and numerically. If any of you haven't seen it, we'll certainly give you another copy of that. So today, what I'm going to really confine my remarks to is where we're going forward in some of the issues that we're going to be facing and addressing in the year ahead. Just a quick summary, and that is Newport Beach's tourism industry. And this is validated through a, a study that we've commissioned. We're a $1 billion a year industry. That's direct visitor spending. We receive almost 7 million visitors annually. 10,000 jobs in town are directly attributed to the tourism industry. Here in California, a lot of people know that tourism's a big deal. They don't know how big a deal it is. These figures are from the California Travel and Tourism Commission. The total value of the visitors, both domestically and internationally, is about $95 billion. This supports 873 jobs, which makes it the third-largest job creator in the state of California with combined earnings of almost $30 billion. The taxes associated with that are 2.1 billion in local taxes and 4 billion in state taxes. I want to give you a quick update as well as to where we stand this year. Tourism in general throughout the country has been on an upswing. There are some pockets that have been, been able to improve upon that and actually have done better than others. This is where we stand as of May. We're going to get the June numbers from PKF Consulting probably within the next week. Our average daily rate is up 7.4% year-to-date over last year. To give you a county-wide average, a comparison, it's about 140 or 6.1% increase, so we're tracking favorably on that. Our occupancy rate here in town is currently at 68.83%. Again, this is as of the end of May, up about 7.2%. The county average is up about 4.3%. Revenue per available room, and this is the key measurement indicator really for the health of the industry, and I think most of our hotel partners would agree on that. That's all the revenue that's available or attributed to a particular room sale. That's at $122. That's up 15%. The county average is about 10.6%.
Gary? Go ahead.
So, is the RevPAR include the, the rate for the room?
Yes, it includes-
Why is, why would RevPAR be less than?
Well, the, the rate, it, it actually includes all revenue per available room, not including the rate, excuse me. So it includes restaurant, includes spa, golf, what have you. Yes.
Shopping in the shop or?
If, or if you're in the hotel.
Yeah.
Yeah, only hotel, with hotel expenses.
Very good. Thank you.
So Gary, I'd like to get an idea of the volatility, though. We, you know, Newport Beach shows up very favorably here in this current upswing environment.
Right.
When we went through the downturn, which was severe, did the numbers for Newport Beach perform worse than the county average? In other words, do we have more volatility in our results than the county average?
You know, I, I, it was a really interesting period. If you look historically at what happened, is we were in a softening period leading up to September of '08. So things were definitely declining. What we saw literally after Lehman Brothers collapsed was a sharp and rapid drop. And we declined more steeply than a lot of other communities because we are much more of an affluent and higher-priced destination. What was particularly interesting, though, is that we stopped the bleeding in March of '09, meaning while we were in a decline mode, we bottomed out at that period and then spent the mo, the rest of '09 getting back up to where we were. We were actually back in growth mode again as of January of last year, January 2010. So we've actually begun to kind of grow and, and get back into that. But we did, we, we experienced it very rapidly, but fortunately, it was fairly short-lived. And I think any community that could say, listen, we had about a six-month decline, that's pretty good. Now, granted, that was a six-month decline to bottom out, and it still took us, you know, another nine months to get back up to kind of where we were so we can grow again. But we were certainly, I, I think, in a more enviable position than a lot of other places. And like many affluent destinations, we came out of the recession much faster in terms of our growth mode. There are a lot of communities that are still kind of struggling to kind of get a foothold on this, but the luxury travel market by and large, and this includes resorts, cruises, any other section of the travel industry, seems to be outperforming most of the other sectors. So the people with the money, they're spending it. That's the good news. I thought I'd also include this, just so you can see the impact of travel from the county-wide perspective. Travel spending within the county is about $8.2 billion. You can kind of see the various sectors of, of where the major dollars are, are deployed. Food and beverage, obviously, a very big one. Arts and entertainment, recreation, that would, that would include Disneyland, retail sales, and then ground transportation, obviously, as well. You can see air travel's a little bit of a sliver. We get a lot of our visitors from the county-wide basis, drive-in business. We, that airport's very important to us, but the vast majority of our visitors, from a county-wide perspective, are drive-in visitors from throughout California and some of the neighboring states. We spend a fair amount of time investing in research, and the reason we do that is we really want to know who our visitors are. We do this ideally every two years. We were scheduled to do this again in '09 because we did in '08. We thought because of the economy, it probably was wise not to do it at that point. So we are now finishing up a year-long study. These, it, these are intercept studies, meaning we actually stop visitors as they're in various parts of the city. So we have people stationed in hotel lobbies, Balboa Village, Corona del Mar, and we actually interview them on a handheld. There's a Horizon Research does that for us. We have four waves, so we do it by season because obviously our summer visitors are different than the ones that come during the winter. So these are three of the waves. We're now completing summer. But this gives you a sort of a, a general snapshot of our visitors in, in general. What I think is really interesting is the second item. 84.3% of our visitors are U.S. residents. Most of those are Californians. I'm going to get to that in a moment. 15% reside in other countries. That's a 3% increase over 2007, meaning our international visitation is beginning to creep up a little bit. You can see that 69% of our visitors are coming here as vac, their primary purpose is to vacation, and 61.3% right above it named us as their primary destination, meaning while we do get spillover of Disneyland, and it is considerable, we're seeing more people choose to come here because of Newport Beach versus they're here for other reasons. And I think that's always a very good sign. $93,000, almost $94,000 is the average household income. That dipped a little bit from 2007 where we were in the six figures. The number that also isn't up here too, but I wanted to also call out, is we asked visitors about their satisfaction of visit, meaning how satisfied are they visiting Newport Beach? And interesting enough, 94% of our visitors expressed a high level of satisfaction with their experience here, which is a wonderful sight. Actually, it mirrors pretty closely to, I believe, what your resident survey recently indicated. So they seem to be matching up.
Do you know how that compares to other geographic areas that do these same kinds of studies?
I, I think it is much, much higher. If you're, usually, in my experience, I've seen it usually somewhere in the 70 to 80% range. I would venture to say in some of the other communities here in Orange County, you would not find it well into the 90s. There are some communities, I'll, I'll name it Anaheim, you have a wonderful theme park there, but the overall experience may not be as consistent with the Magic Kingdom, and I don't think you're going to find the satisfaction of the destination quite as high, certainly not anywhere in the 90s.
Gary, can we go back to the, to the chart?
Yes.
So when we say 69% of visitors named vacation as their primary purpose to visit Newport Beach, is that everybody staying in our hotels?
No. These are all visitors. So we, we talked to day trippers, we talked to people staying with friends and relatives, and we talked to people who are staying in hotels.
These are non-business-oriented visitors? Or is business visitation included?
We include business visitation, but in this case, 69% were here for vacation. I would assume that the other 30% or 31% are here for business purposes. This is kind of where we break out our top markets. Everyone kind of knows, wants to know where our visitors are from. As you can see, California is over- As you can see, California is overriding, followed by Arizona, Utah, Texas, and Washington. Those are our domestic markets. Within California, our largest markets, of course, is the inland empire, the greater Los Angeles area, which includes the West Side, the valley areas, which is San Fernando and San Gabriel, followed by San Diego, and then the Central Coast. On the international side, you can see that 33% of that 15% are coming from the UK and Western Europe. Most of it is from the UK, followed by Canada, Australia, New Zealand, which is a surprise, by the way, because it was not on our radar before, and I'm going to talk about that in just a few moments, followed by Eastern Canada, and finally, the Middle East. The Middle East, I would say, is probably due in a large part to Pelican Hill, because we have a number of Middle Eastern guests that come and they stay for long periods of time at Pelican.
They're not Japanese?
No. The Asian market has been suffering for a long time, and it has been suffering into Southern California for a lot of reasons, not only because of the challenges with some of their natural disasters and such, but also because the lift from LAX into Tokyo has been diminishing now for several years. So I would say all of Southern California has actually seen a pretty significant decline coming out of Japan. Some of the other markets that are on the rise in Southern California are South Korea, but a lot of those folks are staying with friends and relatives. A lot of people talk about the Chinese market. I think the Chinese market is going to be phenomenal, but there's still visa issues. Until we get the visa issue figured out, we're probably not going to see a huge influx from that market either. The other markets that are also continuing to grow in California are India. That's another growing market, but it's probably still in a fairly, you know, in a beginning stage, although we're seeing enough growth in that market for the state of California, the Travel and Tourism Office, to open up an office in New Delhi. So it's significant. This is our proposed, well, this is our budget for this year. We did change our budgeting this year in the sense that in the past, we've always historically budgeted based on what the city is forecasting for transient occupancy tax. What's happened is that it's been a very conservative estimate, and then kind of in the middle of the year, we've received more funds than what was budgeted. So this year, we actually budget on, based on actuals, with about a 5% increase, which is what our hotels believe will occur, barring any economic disaster. This is the TOT portion of it. It's, so we are looking at a total revenue of a little over $2.8 million. We break it out, of that 2.8, about 2/3 of it goes into direct marketing expenses, and the rest is into administration and finance. In addition to this, we have the Tourism Business Improvement District, and that generates about $1.3 million. 100% of that is directed towards group sales effort, meaning all of our group sales effort that supports those six assessed hotels, that's really where all those funds are going. Today, most of what I'm going to be talking about is primarily, though, the TOT portion of it. A lot of us, a lot of people say, "How do you sell Newport Beach?" And I think it's very important to note that we're very brand-centric here. We see ourselves as the custodian of an incredibly important asset, and that is the brand. I wrote a book on this issue, and I really believe that the idea of protecting and nurturing a brand is probably our most important strategic asset, and that's why all the things that you do in terms of infrastructure and maintaining the quality of life here, it's great for the residents, but it's also very important to our business as well. So we thank you for that. You can see this brand promise. This is not something you're going to see on our website. It's not going to, something you're going to see in our collateral material. This is our internal guiding star on how we go out and sell the Newport Beach experience. So when we're producing our visitor guide, when we're doing a client event, when we're doing anything that is out there to tell the story, this is sort of our guiding star, touch point on how we sell this place. And by the way, this whole brand promise was developed through research, so it's not like we made it up over a glass of Chardonnay. This is actually a lot of information that we've gathered from our clients, from our visitors, many of our residents. And you can see that what we sell here is an aspirational lifestyle, a lifestyle that people, when they come here, they feel very special. And in fact, we've actually done some recent research, I'm going to mention in a moment, that compares us to Beverly Hills, Santa Barbara, and Palm Springs, and people really do feel that they are a part of our aspirational lifestyle. They feel like they're included in our culture. It's not something that you observe. In Beverly Hills, people said, "You know what? I'm watching them like they're aliens. I will never be a Beverly Hills person. I'm going to watch them." But here in Newport Beach, you feel like you're a Newport Beach person when you're here, and that's a very important distinction to make when we're out there talking about the experience. This is something that you can be a part of and participate in. The other critical element is, we don't sell Newport Beach as a monolith. We sell it as a collection of unique experiences, and we emphasize the neighborhoods. If you see in our collateral materials, we break out Corona Del Mar, we break out Fashion Island, we break out Balboa Island, so that each place has its own sense of unique character. And that's, so, and that's really kind of spelled out in this brand promise. You may have seen today's daily pilot. If you did, you heard about our Karmageddon campaign. This was sort of an effort for us to try to be flexible and nimble and take advantage of a newsworthy opportunity to try to get business. Very often, we operate that way in that we see an opportunity, we pounce upon it. We don't always know these opportunities are going to present themselves, but this is a campaign that I kind of envisioned after I heard Mayor Villacarosa tell the residents of Los Angeles, "Go on vacation. Get out of here. This place is going to be a mess." And I thought, "Well, this is a great opportunity that's been handed to us." So we approached our hotels, came up with some Karmageddon vacation packages, and we've been running ads like this in the LA Times, also on Coast FM. The good news about this is, of course, it's generated, because it's kind of an out-there campaign, we generated coverage on KNBC, which covered the campaign. The pilot, obviously, has covered it. We're getting some national play as well with some of the other media, and I even got a email today from Congressman Campbell's office, who really enjoyed the idea. So this is sort of an effort for us to generate more business out of the LA market. The LA market is very important to us. We're going to mention that in just a few moments. We want to do more to capture that market because that's certainly our bread and butter market, the one that can generate the highest rate of return from our investments. These are some of our key marketing priorities, and they're not in any numerical order here, but normally, what we try to do is take a look at our plan and look at five, four or five really key things that we need to perhaps emphasize or address in the given year. We're going to get into some of the tactical elements in just a moment. Our first one, though, is this day visitor strategy. As you can see at the bottom, 91% of all of our visitors are day visitors, meaning they're coming, they have a wonderful time, they eat in restaurants, spend money at Fashion Island, and then go home. And what we want to try to do is to take a large percentage of that, even if we, it doesn't even have to be a large percentage, even if we carve off 2% or 3% of these visitors who are coming from LA or even the inland empire and convert them to overnight guests. We spent, we've already worked on addressing this. We hired the Y Partnership. It's a noted research company. They took a look at some of these competitive destinations like Beverly Hills, Santa Barbara, and Palm Springs, asked our visitors in Los Angeles, "How do you feel about these destinations?" What they found, interesting enough, is that when it came to cool, hip, and desirable places, we actually were at the top of the list. It kind of surprised me that we were seen as cooler than Palm Springs because they emphasize a lot of their trendy hotels, but we actually came out higher than that. We also came out with a greater interest among the, a little younger demographic. We've traditionally targeted between 40 and 50. They're recommending that maybe we tone it down to maybe 35 and emphasize more family travel. There's a high propensity of interest among families, particularly young affluent families, of wanting to come to Newport Beach. So we're going to be developing a formalized strategy and new creative to try to capitalize on this as well. We're going to take a look at Australia. As you saw, we're already getting visitors right now out of Australia. Australia's economy is very different than most of the world economies. They're actually doing relatively well. They have a young, very affluent population base. California has already spent a fair amount of time working that market. They have an office there. We're going to try to leverage some of that. We're not going to make a huge investment, but we may try to capitalize on working with the California office and developing some new programming to try to entice some of the Australians to come in here. The Department, US Department of Commerce recently did a study that said the Australian market is going to grow 60%, excuse me, 80% between 2012 and 2016. Phenomenal numbers, and if you look at Asia, it doesn't come anywhere close.
Is that market to here, or is that just a market in general, that they're going to be traveling all over the world?
No, that's market into the United States.
Okay. I just had a question while you were talking, because I know that you wanted to piggyback on the States program in Australia, but you were speaking of bread and butter as far as our daily visitors. And if you put both Western and Eastern Canada together, that's 27% of our international visitors. Are we focusing at all on Canada as a market?
We are. In fact, when we had the flights into Toronto, we actually conducted a media mission over there and generated a lot of good public relations. So whenever we get a new flight traditionally into John Wayne, if it's in a market that we think has some potential, we will continue to address it. Australia, because of its distance, makes it more difficult for us to be able to do the work, so we have to retain some sort of representation like we do in the United Kingdom. And again, I'm not talking about huge numbers here. I'm probably talking $20,000, $30,000 invested in representation into that market, so. But it is going to be an entirely new market for us. We have not been going after the Aussies, which is why we talk about it. We also want to recalibrate the messaging a little bit. You've seen much of our creative, and again, that aspirational message, we want to continue to emphasize, but we're probably going to go to an RFP hire, a new ad agency, to kind of retool some of our creative and recalibrate our messaging based on what we've learned from the Y Partnership. Again, emphasize a little of that family-oriented travel and to go after more of that LA market. There, you know, the Karmageddon campaign was a deliberate attempt to go after the LA market. We're also looking at other things. We've been in discussions, certainly with the Dunes, to try to capture more of the Fourth of July business. We think that there's a market there of overnight guests, not just regional people who will come in and spend their money and leave. This year, we had some tribute bands at the Dunes. It worked out very, very well. We're thinking of trying to expand that. We see growth of key special events, and again, these are very key selected special events that can help us round out the rest of the year in terms of some of our appeal as a destination, particularly in LA.
On the, I mean, I understand your message, that the upscale luxury product, but is that a difficult message when we're trying to convert day visitors? Because the day visitor tends not probably to be quite as affluent as the people who are coming here to stay anyway in our hotels.
Well, you know what's interesting from the people in LA, and is that it's not that they're not, you know, there's a lot of folks, frankly, from the inland empire who are not as affluent, and we're going to probably try to find ways to replace some of these guests. However, one of the key learnings is that people see us as an extension of Los Angeles, as opposed to Palm Springs or Santa Barbara, where you have to drive and you actually feel like you're going somewhere. There is a perception that we are part of LA's backyard, and that people don't always think about staying here overnight. People would come down, they would stay at Disneyland, turn around, and go back home. So we're trying to re-educate them. What we hear from our guests is, when they're here, they feel like they've entered into a totally different place. It looks, it feels differently than anything they left behind, and they usually say, "Why haven't I thought about it earlier?" But it's really changing that mindset that, you know, we're as much of a vacation destination as traveling two hours to Palm Springs. That's our biggest challenge. Community hospitality training. One of the things that we do think is very, very important is that we deliver exceptional customer service. And while we do have a high level of satisfaction among our guests as a destination, our recent research indicated that we're perhaps not as strong as we could be in delivering guest-level satisfaction or personal service. And what we would like to try to do, and this is happening in a lot of communities, where we can develop a service training program that would be available for frontline people, but perhaps even more importantly, and this is where I really think it's groundbreaking. We've had a number of discussions with Jay Johnson, and he is a very tourism-centric police chief, and he understands that perhaps what we could do is offer some hospitality training to his officers so that we can, because they are ambassadors, and frankly, his officers are interacting with more of our visitors on a daily basis than I am, we want to make sure that they understand the level of service. And while they have to protect and keep the bad guys out, we also want them to be able to take care of our visitors in the way that's representative of the style of Newport Beach.
And I would also encourage this to be extended to the lifeguards, because they actually have more contact than probably anybody.
Absolutely. That's a very good idea. We'd be happy to do that. So what, we're going to develop a module, we're going to work with the police chief and his staff, and certainly, I believe, including the lifeguards would be an excellent idea, too. Anybody who comes in contact with our visitors, I think it's important to remind people the way we need to interact with them, and we certainly have to transact business, but we also want them to feel good about their experience here as well.
You may need to retrain some of our residents in that respect.
Can offer that as well, too. These are the various marketing components that we employ when we're selling the destination. There is no one magic bullet to selling anything in this day and age. It's really a menu of complementary activities that help create that mind's eye perception of a destination, and these are all specific areas that we address in our marketing plan. We kind of go through a few of them very, very quickly. Advertising, we spend a lot of time on online advertising. Travel Zoo is a great website for us, as well as TripAdvisor, where we can actually plant deals, and what's great about this is it's very quantifiable so that we can create hotel packages over a specific need period. So for example, if we know the middle of August is going to be soft, we can talk to our hotels, assemble product, put together a deal, make a deal with Travel Zoo, offer their product, they push it into the marketplace, and we can actually fill a lot of hotel rooms very, very quickly. So that is, and we can count it, which is also a nice thing. So we like to try to emphasize that. We're also going to be looking at more print advertising. Everybody thinks print is dead. I will tell you, the research indicates it is not. People still like magazines. They're not as strong as they used to be, but I will tell you that when it comes to creating an image and creating desirability, travel print is still very powerful. Collateral materials, many of you have seen our visitor guide, which recently came out. It's a wonderful piece, the most robust piece I think we've ever created, certainly from an advertising's perspective. We have our brand-new Newport Beach maps, and again, it breaks out maps for the various neighborhoods. Again, we don't sell it as a monolith, but these things are also used pretty frequently. A lot of people say, "Well, with the web, do you really need a visitor guide anymore?" What's interesting is that even though the web, that visitor guide is available in a Digimag format, you can actually read it on the visitor, on our website. People still call and request a hard copy. They want to hold it, they want to feel it, they want to dream about it, what have you. We also have a lot of distribution locally, so when people come here, they go over to Pete's Coffee in the morning, they pick up a visitor guide, plan their schedule for a day, so it's still a very relevant document for us. Online marketing, certainly our website and really all, you know, in terms of travel, the web is really king. It is still the primary use of what most people do online is to look at travel deals. A lot of what our website is used for is research. People tend to look, see what they can do, what options are available to them. They very often go to other sites in order to book because there's a perception of value of going to an Expedia or a Travelocity. We do have a Travelocity booking engine on our site as a matter of convenience, but we know that most people go elsewhere because they think they're getting a better deal. The website, though, is very, very important for us to be able to offer very timely-oriented deals. We have, for example, a video on our Karmageddon campaign helps promote that and helps drive business to the respective hotel sites. E-communications, we spend a lot of time also developing e-newsletter to people who have asked permission to receive information from us, and these are both consumers, the media, travel industry, and our community partners. We have an e-newsletter because we want to keep people abreast of what's going on here. We also work with Living Social and Groupon in terms of various promotions. These Groupon websites are just monsters. You may have heard about the fact that the Taste utilized Groupon this last year and was able to push a lot of ticket sales out within a 48-hour period. It was, again, it was at a discount, so you sacrifice some of that, but the other part of it is you do generate some good traffic out of it. Mobile applications, if you, the mobile app is really important, and in fact, if you have your iPhones, there is a wonderful web mobile app called Newport Beach Insider. It was created by a noted travel writer who we've worked with called Mary Ann Hemphill. It is a great mobile app that gives you all sorts of details about just about every attraction and community neighborhood here in and community neighborhood here in town, and mobile apps are increasingly become very important as well. Social media, we are on Facebook, we do Twitter, Flickr, YouTube. We're even going to be offering timely news videos. We have now entered into a contract with the producer for Huel Hauser Show, and they're going to be doing some news videos, so we're going to be able to get quick and dirty videos on our website pretty quickly and utilize it through the various social media channels. Facebook now, one of the top three sites for travel information, believe it or not. Big surprise. Social media, again, we use that. You'll see our Newport Beach page on Facebook where we can actually interact with our guests, and also we monitor it very closely and get back to visitors whenever there's inquiries or interest, so that we know what they're saying, and if they have a problem, we try to address it. But we use this as an opportunity to engage people, and online engagement is very, very important in our business nowadays. Public relations is very important, I would say, in terms of our ability to go out there and tell our story. One of the interesting things we did this year is we created a Newport Beach prize on The Price is Right. We talked about that at our annual dinner. The prize did not sell, they actually bid too high for it, interesting enough, but it is one kind of interesting way that we're trying to bring in the entertainment industry into selling our product, and we're not necessarily utilizing travel channels. We're trying to use basic consumer travel channels as well. We have a media manager who works with a lot of travel editors, both broadcast and print, and developing these stories. And then we also do advertising equivalency to kind of judge what the advertising value would be for that. International markets, you've heard a lot about our UK effort. I won't go into any more great detail, except on the right side there, you'll see that is the package that we're still offering right now in the UK with the cabs. We're coming close to the end of our cab period here. 849 pounds, which includes five nights at the Hyatt and a flight in from London, so it's actually a great deal. It did very well last year, and our friends at Virgin Holidays are continuing to work with us. So we won't abandon the UK market, even though we're going to dabble a little bit into Australia. Conference sales, again, this is covered under the T-bid, so I'm going to be very, very brief on this and just give you an understanding of what we've been able to do. This year, we booked 12,414 direct room nights, consists of about 63 groups, 286 leads, representing potential room nights of 93,000 individuals. One of the things that we try to do is bring clients to the table. Our key element here is to try to bring more clients under our tent, so that they're exposed to Newport Beach and can say yes to any of our hotels. So we create a client event during the Christmas Boat Parade. We have the lead boat on the first night of the parade. We work with the Chamber, they give us their wonderful yacht that they've been able to get, and we actually host about 35 to 40 clients during that period. They're also stuck on the boat with us for about two hours, so they're captive prisoners. We also did it during The Taste of Newport, and we also did it during Toshiba. So we utilize some of these big events as sales opportunities to help sell the destination as well. And the more we can develop relationships, and that's so much of what we do, is developing relationships, because it's all about connections, knowing people who can say yes to Newport Beach. We try to hire people with very strong rolodexes, if people even use that term anymore, so that they can help turn some business for us.
Question for you, Gary. So it's 2.8 million that you get from the city, and now there's this new assessment that generates about 1.2 million.
Right.
So you're working about $4 million.
Correct.
What is the breakdown per hotel room that it costs to market?
Well, I don't think we necessarily break it down by per hotel room in terms of that matrix on that. You know, it's really not been one of those rationales where you can do a direct benefit on some of that, because the cost of acquisition on a piece of business may not necessarily correlate to that. I think that's where the challenge is. Otherwise, we'd be happy to do that.
What is the, what are sort of generally accepted metrics in the industry to measure the amount of marketing to the return that you're getting? What does the industry usually look at?
Well, they certainly look at the ability for us to be able to generate direct room nights, a number of opportunities to engage with clients. Now, again, this is on the group side. There's two areas that we're looking at here. On the group side, it's about engaging with specific clients, being able to bring them to the table, generating leads, getting them to show up at events, and obviously, at the end of the day, we're trying to get them to consummate a deal. Sometimes the challenge with us is that we'll bring a client into a hotel and say, "Here it is. It's our client," but then the client will start talking with the hotel, and then they'll book, because again, we don't have a convention center. They don't necessarily have to go through us, so sometimes they'll contact a hotel. So we don't always know every time a piece of business goes definite. Now, that's for the group side of it. On the leisure side of it, it is even more tricky, because if I had a turnstile that I could put on MacArthur that could tell me that every time somebody saw something in American Way Magazine and they decided to come here as a result, and I knew that, I could take credit for that. We put, we do, there's so much that we do to help create a climate of demand here that we can't always quantify, particularly on the leisure side. That's why when I mentioned about the Travel Zoo, the fact that we can quantify that, because we can say, "We booked X number of rooms," is a wonderful tool. And the web is allowing us additional matrices in which to be able to evaluate. We can evaluate click-throughs and a number of ways that people access the site, but to give you a precise number of how many people came, it's always been difficult. That is the number-one challenge in our business, I think, more than anything else. And there's so much of what we're doing is trying to create demand and awareness and interest. Ultimately, how many people come out of it? We could try to measure some of it through some of our research, and that's why we invest in it, but you can never get a precise hard number on that. And everybody's been doing it. We even have a national group working on standardization aspects of it, and that's the one where we can't find the magic bullet on yet. So we're getting better. I think we've got better than we used to have, but it's not entirely locked down.
So Gary, you're two or three minutes over your 15-minute target.
I've got like two more slides, Mr. Mayor, and I'm done. These are sales markets. We have people actually deployed literally all over the country. We've got four salespeople. These are their markets. We don't allow any state to escape us. We obviously know some areas are more productive than others, for example Sacramento, hugely productive for us from a room night generating standpoint, the state associations. These are the advertising that we do. We invest in a lot of trade media to get our message out to those key decision-makers on the meeting planning side. And finally, just, this is our promotion to help get more meeting planners deal with us. If you, for example, give us your request for proposal for your meeting, we give you a $100 Nordstrom gift card. If you actually book through us and you have a signed contract, we will then give you an American Express gift card, and then we will enter you into our new promotion called Living the Dream. This has generated a phenomenal amount of excitement among our meeting clients, where we will actually set them up. Burr White's worked with us in securing a beautiful oceanfront property for a week. Beverly Hills Rental Car is going to donate a great beautiful car for them to tool around. We'll get them on Hornblower, we'll give them a Duffy Boat Tour, shopping packages, and basically tailor it any way they would like for those five days. It's really just, again, an incentive that plays off our strengths as a destination while setting us apart from our competitive set. And again, it's, like I've said, it's generated a great deal of response from our very cynical meeting planning clients. Again, these are some of the ads that we're going to use to support that. Turn your next RFP into an OMG, that's our campaign line, and you can see how we do that. That is my report. I'm sorry I went three minutes over, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, any other questions for Gary?
We're going to have another presentation, is that right, Dave?
Please, one last.
All right, I think I'll save my questions.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Gary.
So with Gary's presentation, that brought up some issues, just his annual review and opportunity for city staff to speak with you about ways to potentially improve the partnership that we have with Visit Newport Beach. I guess as we looked at at a staff level, cities have various approaches to their interactions with destination marketing organizations or CBBs. That is kind of on the left side there, a more hands-off approach, where you kind of treat them like a contractor, the money is over there, and off they go, and implement the marketing effort with it, versus significant involvement that's more like a public-private entity. And I guess I characterize us as kind of on this side, maybe not all the way to hands-off, but certainly over towards the left. So in today's relationship, we have an agreement that sets forth that our participation in their Board of Directors, which includes me as a non-voting member and the library director as a voting member, that's a 25-member board of directors. They have a seven-member executive board that offers recommendations to the full board for adoption. As Gary talked about, Visit Newport Beach receives what is about 18% of the overall TOT and visitor service fee that's collected. That was about 2.7 million in 10/11. T-bid is separate, again, as Gary noted, that's about 1.3 million, and that's a direct pass-through to the T-bid members from an additional room tax that's collected off the T-bid members. That's authorized under state law. Agreement term today runs through actually June 30th, not June 20th, 2014. In that agreement, it talks about different things that need to come to the city, including Gary's presentation today, which is the marketing plan and budget, and it says that the budget has to be approved by the city council. There's also supposed to be a report on the previous fiscal year's activities and an annual audit. And the city has the ability to conduct an audit or compliance review once each year. And if we were to terminate this relationship for cause, it has to be at least one of those three things. Without cause, either party can terminate with a year's notice. So we've done a compliance review with Visit Newport Beach. They participated in that effort, and they came back with these recommendations generally. One would be to increase the city's role on the executive committee. Two, that Visit Newport Beach should adopt some formal policies regarding travel and entertainment, and how they deal with specialized services through the RFP process, including the formal process for selecting their auditor every three years. Would affirm that board members and staff need to sign conflicts of interest forms. They do that now, there's, and we wanted to make sure that's reinforced, that Visit Newport Beach and the city should coordinate discussions about special event marketing. Gary noted how they do support many of the same special events that are important to the community, important to you, and that we fund as well, and I think there's probably more opportunities for partnership there to make sure we're maximizing our dollars. It also talked about the increases in the annual budget. As Gary mentioned, sometimes the TOT comes in above or below what we expected, so that that actual increase would have a review by the city, and that there'd be a compensation study for senior Visit Newport Beach staff. These are all things that generally Visit Newport Beach agreed are important improvements. So if we were to move in that direction, I think it moves the arrow a little bit more to the right, certainly not all the way to the right, but if that's a pendulum, we come a little bit closer to the middle there. And that's where I'd like your input on what my recommendation would be, to amend the agreement to address those issues raised in the compliance review, such as the executive board appointment, the adoption of the policies on RFPs, travel and entertainment, a review with the city regarding increases in budget for specifically fixed operating costs. I don't want to micromanage their marketing efforts, but if they were to take additional costs that involved fixed operating costs, rather than just additional marketing dollars, I think that should be reviewed with the city. There are a couple of things that in this process, this compliance review audit, that I think are important things that should be addressed in an amended agreement, and that would be to clarify what we do have the ability to audit. I think it's fairly vague in that document. It would clarify the city's role in reviewing the marketing plan and budget. It's a little hazy. The budget has to come to you for approval. I'd like that language clarified, that you do get to see the marketing plan, too, which Gary is always great about doing, but I think it should be clarified that that is an opportunity for you to review and comment. Also, there's no, we typically have minimums for insurance for businesses that we deal with, and our risk manager thinks that's an important addition to the contract. We talked, actually Councilmember Daigle mentioned this a little bit about performance standards. I don't think the city's in a position to recommend performance standards to Visit Newport Beach, but I think they know their business well enough and should develop, because I know they do this anyway, develop and report their own performance standards within that document that would come to you. They've asked for consideration of an extension to June 30th of 2016. We've also talked about maybe some additional duties or roles for Visit Newport Beach. So as I look at the request to potentially extend this out another two years, I think these are important changes that might be made to the agreement that could, I think, give the city management, including our finance department, additional assurance that things are as they should be. We do think things are as they should be. There's always the uncertainty about what happens if Gary's not there, or the current board's not there, that we'd like to reaffirm that some of these protections in the event that that changes.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim Gardner?
I like the idea of moving that arrow, because these are, in a sense, public funds. This is money that otherwise, if we didn't have this agreement, would be going to other things within the city. We wisely said that we want to support our Visitors Bureau, because it is important. It's a huge source of income. But I think that these, many of these changes are very good. The RFPs, I don't know why we can't use them almost on everything, because we have, it's no different than getting an ad agency. You get an ad agency, you ask for ad agencies to come in, do their presentations, they do, and you have, you pick one usually to handle most of your business, and the same with an auditor. I come out of marketing, and it is, Gary's right, so many of these things are very hard to measure without spending just a ton of money. But it was also one of the advantages of being in marketing. Oh, well, we can't measure that. So I would encourage the Visitors, Visit Newport, to develop some standards of reporting, so we can see, maybe it's a comparison with other cities as far as you showed with the room rates and that sort of thing. I think that you can be creative, but there are some ways that we can gauge effectiveness, I think, and that would be very helpful. You presented something that had sides-by-sides, and I wondered, as far as the budget, there was something about reserves, and my sense is that this is not, you don't want to have a lot of reserve. I mean, you're spending your money, I'm hoping. That's the point, not to have a big savings account, have enough to cover what may be the Carmageddon campaign when you say, "What an opportunity," but not to be saving money. One of the areas that we talked about was when the city should look at approvals of changes in expenses. And I think right now, that was after the budget is adopted, it said the city councils to review and consider approved budget amendments that involve fixed operational costs. And you had 10,000 crossed out and 100,000 or more included. That's a pretty big range, a pretty big jump. What sort of cost did you think of? Can you be more specific?
I think this would be if, for instance, if the office location moved, that there was maybe a significant expansion in staff, or something that would be a fixed long-term thing, rather than, I think Visit Newport Beach today reacts very well to say, "Hey, we have an extra 200,000, let's push that out in this specific marketing effort," so that that would be not necessarily a recurring cost, so that we would review the fixed operation costs.
And you're comfortable with the 100,000?
Well, that's actually a proposal I made, so I am comfortable with it. There were other agreements that we were looking at that had it as low as 10. I thought that was too low.
Okay. And then the only other thing I have, and again, it goes back to what you were saying, that it's always awkward to talk about some things, because it's not personal. You're talking about, okay, we have a great staff right now, but things change, and we want to be sure we have the policies and procedures in place. And I'm hoping that when, as the conflict of interest policy is perhaps more fully developed, I'm thinking of what was happening at the Coliseum with using, say, a company that somebody on staff has an interest in, that that sort of thing is addressed, because that's, particularly when we're dealing with public funds, we want to be sure that everything is very, very clear, and if there is a policy, how it's is very, very clear, and if there is a policy, how it's explained, and who approves it, and that sort of thing. I'm not quite sure what the conflict policy is right now, but I'm hoping that it will include that sort of thing, so that we won't find ourselves in such a situation as they had up there.
Understood. Okay. Thanks, Nancy, that was a very comprehensive presentation, so Councilmember Curry?
Well, a couple of things. First of all, I think we need to recognize that this year, I think our hotel tax is going to reach its all-time record level, which coming out of the recession is a tremendous accomplishment, and I think it speaks to the success of the program. I agree with some of the things Councilmember or Mayor Pro Tim Gardner said about accountability, these are public funds, I think having the city better represented on the Executive Board is a good way to achieve that, but beyond that, I think we need to be, and I think some of the proposed management changes are good, but I think we want to sort of, at arm's length, let the Visitors Bureau figure those out, and not try and micromanage the agency. What we don't want to do is screw up something that's working, or make this a political operation that, in a way, it should not be. So I think if we can sort of remand back to the Visitors Bureau these issues, and maybe tweak the governing board, I'm fine with the extension. I think that gets to many of the issues I think Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tim Gardner's concerned about, and I share her concerns, but it does so in a way that we don't screw up something that's working, I think, very well.
Councilmember Daigle?
Well, I support the manager's recommendations, I think that's why we hire a professional manager, and the fact is, is that this is, you know, these expenditures take place in a public setting, and, you know, there may be a little bit of a culture clash, I mean, I know when I've traveled on city business, back to DC, you know, lunches in the federal cafeteria, and sometimes we even pay out of our own pocket, so it's not maybe the comfort and the hospitality that the industry is used to. So I think there's a little bit of a clash in terms of how, you know, tax dollars get spent versus, you know, how a travel industry sort of conducts itself. But I do support the manager's recommendations, and one thing that I've been, kind of thought a lot about is that, you know, we have some properties down coast, the Pelican Resort, that is going to have a lot of revenues from the city, and I often wonder, well, you know, the owners of the resort have their marketing channels, and how much of their efforts are responsible for their clients, which are going to generate a lot of dollars versus Visit Newport, and is it really appropriate to continue, given those increasing revenues, to take the full 18% out of there, and at what point, you know, would we want to consider capping the percentages that's coming out of that revenue? And then another property that comes to mind that has very distinct marketing channels is Crystal Cove with the cottages, and I know they've approached us in the past, you know, can some of that TOT be directed back into capital investments in the property? So I would also like to explore, as we go through this, you know, areas, those particular properties where, you know, maybe the full 18% can be allocated otherwise. So those would be my comments, but I do support the manager's recommendation, I know an awful lot of time went into these issues, and I actually think that the staff has a lot of courage for taking this on, because I think in the past, you know, some things were not, there wasn't the level of oversight that I think today's environment really demands. So, thank you.
Okay. All right, I would just add a few comments. I support the idea that we need to have the proper level of oversight, but still to try and preserve the entrepreneurial nimbleness that is required in a marketing environment like this, and the Carmageddon is a good example of that, to not suppress the kind of creativity and quick movement that's necessary. I too support the manager's recommendations in general here, and look forward to seeing a revision to the contract that reflects those. I would also support extending the agreement. I would comment that, you know, it does look like there's a lot of reserves on the balance sheet, and so I would encourage Visit Newport Beach, and as we continue to work with them, to spend the money, get the visitors, that cash doesn't do us any good, sitting on a balance sheet. And I know you need reserves, I'm not suggesting you shouldn't have reserves, but it seems like there's a lot of reserves there, and they could be put to good use, especially now, as we're in an upswing, that's where you get the biggest bang for the buck, when you're trying to generate customer response. Lastly, on this issue of other responsibilities, I for one would like to see staff explore the idea of Visit Newport Beach being made responsible for filming activity in the city. I see real synergism there, because, you know, Newport, Visit Newport Beach's mission is to maximize the brand value of the city, the attractiveness to outsiders, what better way to do that than to always have that in the backs of our minds when we're working with people doing filming in our city? And there may also well be some fee revenue enhancements that could be associated with that, I don't know, but my understanding is that other visitor bureaus do have responsibility for that, and to me, it seems like a perfect, natural fit. But, you know, so I'd like staff to explore that, working with Visit Newport Beach and our current filming management people, to see if we can come to a better agreement, and perhaps reflect that in a revised agreement that would come back to us. Personally, I think we're doing a good job, very good job, actually, with our marketing of the city, and I'm anxious for that to continue. Councilmember Hill?
I would just like to add that I too believe that we're doing an incredible job, and I don't pretend for one minute to think that the city can do a better job. And I believe that the opportunity of joining the Executive Board in more of a participatory way is an excellent way to understand what's going on and have input into that process, but to micromanage, to micromanage expenditures, to micromanage the aggressive entrepreneurial decision-making that needs to take place to be successful, I think we would do great damage to the organization, to the success. I am not in favor of dinking around with the 18%, or talking about other expenditures within that, I think that's an agreed-upon process, and it's something that individuals can count on and budget to and work to, and I'm very much in favor of extending the agreement. But my summary is I'm very opposed to attempting to micromanage the activity.
Okay, I would add just one other thought, it does seem a bit anomalous to me that our library director is a voting member of the board, and our city manager isn't, and we have no other, even no representation. I'd like staff to work with, Cynthia Cowell's a great lady, you know, this is not personal to her at all, it just seems like that's a bit anomalous, I'll just leave it at that.
It is our second-most visited asset, though, in the community, so. I know why, you know, Gary put her on there, I think it doesn't, it's a good role for Cynthia, it's also maybe a good role for me, too, so.
All right, well, okay, I don't have any specific guidance for you in that respect, it just seems a little unusual. So with that, we would like to take public comment on this agenda item, so anyone from the public caring to comment on Visit Newport Beach? Seeing no one. I would leave you only with the idea that 50% of all advertising money is wasted, the trick is figuring out which 50%. So we'll trust that you'll be able to do that well, Gary. Thank you for your presentation. Okay, that's the last regular agenda item, time is fleeting here. We do have a chance for public comment on non-agenda items, we do not have a closed session tonight, so there's no need for comment on closed session. Anyone have a comment on any other subject? Seeing none, we'll adjourn until our regular meeting resumes at 7:00 PM.